Hi, it's Kana Selam Nama. Good evening. It's good to see you all. Welcome to the Business Committee meeting, June 12th. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that with great respect and humility, we acknowledge and honor the land of the Sinemoc people. The Sinemoc people maintain their profound, unique, and spiritual connection through the land, through ages traditions, teachings, stewardship, and express presence of reciprocity. Moving on to additions or deletions from the agenda. There is a deletion regarding 11.1, Trustee Rockabye RE South End Pedestrian Safety. Trustee Rockabye is unable to attend tonight, so that will be removed from the agenda. If I could have someone motion to accept the additions and deletions to the agenda? Thank you, Greg. A seconder? Thanks, Leanna. So if anyone's opposed to that, could you just type it in the chat? Okay, so that is so moved. I should have added the change in order there, so we're not going to change the order. So if someone can motion to approve the agenda as amended? Thanks, Greg. Seconded by Chantel. If anyone's opposed, just type it in the chat. Okay, motion carries. Number six, approval of the minutes, that the minutes of the Business Committee meeting held May 8th, 2024 be approved? Chantel, and then seconded by Greg. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to number seven presentations. The NDTA Professional Development Committee Chair Danielle Chison is going to give us a presentation on the Professional Development Report. Welcome, Danielle.
Chris, I see you're sharing your screen.
Yeah, I'm tech support, and I'm just wondering if Danielle is coming? Oh, Danielle's not quite on yet.
I can't see if Danielle is on here or not. If she isn't, would there be an option to maybe let Chris go first as he has 7.2?
Oh, so Danielle is going to come and join me at my desk. We're having some tech issues, so she here, she comes.
Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't working where I was. Thank you for your patience. So hello, everybody. My name is Danielle Chison, and I am the Professional Development Chair for the NDTA. And please don't mind me, I'm just referring to my notes down here. So, um, thank you. So we have accomplished a lot this year with PROD, including District Day, supporting individual teachers with their PROD, professional learning groups and partnerships, supporting early career teachers and TTOCs. We also support using grants, book clubs, and other additional offerings for professional development. This is my second year of a two-year term as PROD Chair. Chris joins us as our released officer on our committee. And I would also like to do, to give a huge thank you to the other people who have helped on the committee. We have Loa Richardson, Kristen Singbell, Amy Blow, Dookie Davis, Miranda Sadermo, Jeff Webb, Laura Berlanda, Sarah Armstrong, Andrea Doek, and Kyla Silverton. District Days held each year in February. This year's theme was Better Together. This is the language that dictates the implementation of our District Day. So our committee has spent many hours planning and preparing to host the District by Day, and they thoughtfully review and select the presenters we have for District Day. We hosted more than 30 presenters, and this year we opted to have several offsite options as well as the options at Dover. Some notable workshops included Snow Shewing at Mount Washington, Self-Compassion for Educators Workshop at Bethlehem Retreat Center with Dominique Sullivan. We also had wood carving with Beau Wagner at Wildwood, and we also provided workshops on clayworking and UFLI. So this is our last year in our current three-year cycle. Our funds run on three-year cycles. Teachers' individual funds were increased to $400 this year as opposed to the typical $300. This made our three-year total a nice round number at $1,000 per teacher over the three years as long as they are in a continuing 1.0 contract. Teachers can use their autonomy to choose what they would like to do for professional development, and they can use their funds under our policy to support their learning. Notably, we saw teachers using their funds in the following ways. Lots of teachers were purchasing professional books and resources, cultural experiences, PSA Day, which is in October, it's our Provincial Wide PROD Day. They spend their money on conferences and other workshops, both locally and internationally. Okay, so we have our professional learning groups. This year we had 41 groups on the go. Each group can have up to eight funded members and are provided with $400 per member to either use for release time or to buy materials and supplies needed to explore their topic of interest. This slide outlines some of the topics explored this year. Professional learning partnerships are an opportunity for two teachers to receive TTOC coverage to meet together to collaborate on an area of interest. You can read about, you can re-hear about some topics explored by our 10 partnership groups. This year, the committee used the TTOC Compensation Fund to allow for teachers to access additional funding to attend either PSA Day conferences or the New Teacher Conference. This is our first year since pre-COVID that we have been able to fund our capacity billing grants. These grants allow for the participant to access an additional $2,000 in funding to attend an event with a global context. $800 of this funding is reserved for release time with the remaining 1,200 reserved for them to use for additional costs such as travel or conference fees. Teachers who use this grant are then asked to present at our next District Day or in a different PROD Day, maybe locally at their school. And notably, we had some teachers using this grant to explore kilts making in Scotland, theater in New York, and the Get Your Teach On Conference in Las Vegas. This year, the committee really wanted to provide a way for teachers to connect about their professional learnings in more of an informal way. So the committee came up with the idea of an informal book club. Each group can have up to 10 participants, and they would choose one book to share together. Each member received $30, up to $30 per book, and they also received a gift card to provide snacks. One of the things we did ask back is that teachers sent in a selfie with their books and just a little blurb about whether they thought that the book would be a good resource for their teachers or not. All right, and this year we also really tried to offer some additional opportunities outside of the typical PROD Day for professional development. So we held two after-school sessions with Beau Wagner at Wildwood, who explored learning from the land with our teachers. We also supported a large group of teachers who were wanting to learn more about UFLI, and we brought in the University of Florida virtually to provide the training for UFLI. And we also helped to support the Early Career Committee. Thank you. What is that word again? The Early Career Teachers Committee in supporting them with an art night for the teachers. And that brings us to the budget. So I believe that the budget was attached, our most recent budget statement for your viewing. We had a year full of amazing professional development opportunities for our teachers, and I do look forward to serving the membership for another two years as PROD Chair. And I'm open to any questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Danielle. Just give everyone a minute here to see if they have any questions. Chantel?
Hello. Thank you, Danielle. It's great to see all the wonderful learnings that everyone is getting. I think it's absolutely fantastic. Really appreciate this presentation that you've done for us today. I'm curious about UFLI. Would you be able to explain that a bit more? Thank you.
Yeah, so UFLI, that is the University of Florida Learning Institute. They have developed a manual for reading, specifically for early intervention of reading. I haven't explored it myself quite yet, so I don't know all of the details, but quite a few schools across our district have been exploring UFLI as a way to enhance their teaching of early literacy.
Great, and is that, if you haven't taken it, I probably shouldn't ask that question. It's more of an in-depth question of like, does that help learners with learning disabilities? Is that like how that's done? But I think that's a question for perhaps somebody that's actually taken it up.
Yeah, from my understanding, it's kind of full scope. It's a universal design kind of idea, so it's good for everybody.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. I'll let somebody else ask a question now. Thanks.
Danielle?
Thank you, Danielle. Good to see you and lovely to see this presentation. I always love to learn more about what you guys are doing. And in that vein, I was really intrigued by the phrase "get your teach on." Can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, so again, it's a conference I have not attended myself, but it was a conference that was hosted in Las Vegas this year. From my understanding, they had a wide scope of offerings and different workshops, and kind of gives more of an idea of what's going on around the world in teaching, not just locally. So, yeah, I really know about that.
But just to follow up, I think you might know this. It wouldn't be necessarily only geared to new teachers. It would be geared to the whole spectrum of...
Yeah, from my understanding, we had early career teachers and later career teachers that were attending. They covered everything from math to literacy, kind of a full spectrum of offerings there.
I had one more question, but I don't, and it's in the same vein. May you, will you indulge me, Chair? Are there any conferences that are, how are we doing in terms of having conferences that are newer teachers accessing things that are sort of really geared towards them?
Yeah, so we do have the New Teachers Conference that happens twice a year. They hosted it in Vancouver, and also I believe it was in Prince George this year. So that conference is specifically for our early career teachers. Our PSA Days in October are actually full spectrum as well. So we have social studies PSAs, we have intermediate teachers, primary teachers, all sorts of different PSAs that cover different topics. And I've attended quite a few of those myself, especially the intermediate teachers one. It is great for new teachers and even later career teachers, but they do have a lot of offerings for our early career teachers, which is fantastic. We also really tried with our District Day to make sure we had a good balance of new and interesting, on-the-edge kind of offerings for our teachers as well. So locally here, we like to try and support them as well.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
And thank you, Joe, for popping in. PSA is a Provincial Specialist Association through the BCTF, so thank you.
Chantel, you have another question?
Actually, sorry, Chantel.
Go to Leanna.
I'm gonna let Leanna go first, and then I'll pop back around to you. Thanks.
Hi, sorry, that took me a minute. What an amazing presentation. This is all so fun and juicy, and it makes me kind of wish that I was a teacher and going to these things. The carving with Beau Wagner, that just sounds absolutely incredible. What, like, is that a whole-day thing? And what, like, what did you guys carve? I know that's, it's such a tiny detail, but I'm just dying to know.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend myself because I had to be at Dover for that one. I am not sure what the project was that they made. I think it was a bit of a combination of a small carving project to take back to the classroom. I believe it was a necklace, and then he also took them around Wildwood to explore learning from the land. So that was our full-day session for District Day for our after-school sessions. They were about an hour and a half long after school and did some more exploring learning from the land with that lens. And we're actually looking at next year possibly having half-day sessions where we're able to release teachers to go learn from the land with Beau as well as more of a seasonal. So hopefully, once in the fall, once in the winter, once in the spring, so that they can see what outdoor learning can look like at all seasons. So we look forward to continuing our work with Beau.
That's incredible. It would be so amazing if every teacher got to experience even just one hour at Wildwood because it's just so special. Yeah, thank you.
It truly is special. Thank you.
All right, Chantel?
I gotta say, doing that each season, I think is, it's such a foundational thing and something that I never even thought of, but that makes complete sense, and I'm really excited. I really hope that can happen. My question is really about the differences between the professional learning groups, the learning partnerships, and the mentorship, right? They seem similar, but they're not. So if you could sort of like unpack that a little bit for me, that would be great.
Absolutely. I know Chris and Nora are going to have a little bit more information about mentorship. So our professional learning groups are more for exploring an area of interest and giving teachers the opportunity to have some either release time or some funding in order to really dig into it, because sometimes we learn about something new, we attend a workshop, we think it's really cool, but we need to dig in a little bit deeper. So this allows teachers to have this time and/or funding to supply the materials. For example, I participated in one myself, which was for beading. So with my group, we got the supplies, we sat down together, we learned to do the beading. And it, we typically can't, our policy does not allow for the use of funding to be used for supplies. So this is a unique way to be able to support the teachers in a different way. Our partnerships are strictly for release time. It can be used as more of a friendly and formal mentorship, more of like a trusted colleague. You want to explore a new topic you've learned or a new interest. You can watch your partner in their classroom introducing something, vice versa, or just use that time to meet together. Whereas mentorship is set up a little bit differently, but I'll probably let Chris and Nora explain a little bit more about the mentorship piece, but that's how specifically the groups and the partnerships differ. And I hope that's clear. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it really does. Thank you. I appreciate it a lot. Thank you for that.
Right. I don't see any more questions, Danielle, so thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate you taking the time to meet with us tonight. So we'll move on to 7.2, where we're going to hear from the NDTA Professional Issues Officer, Chris Perry-Evly, and he's going to talk about mentorship, which is, oh, I've already seen this, so it's so exciting.
Hi, I'm just getting my, switching over. I was doing the, I was off to the side for Danielle's presentation. I'm just getting my presentation up. Yeah, so here we go. Okay, and Leanne, can you let me know if you can see my, the mentorship slide? Perfect. Awesome. Okay, so, oh, I'm pushing wrong buttons. We're going over here. As Leanne had let us know, I'm Chris Perry-Evly. I am the Professional Issues Officer for the NDTA this year, and going into next year, which I'm excited to represent the membership. I also have my colleague Nora Moslin, who is our secondary rep chair for the Mentorship Committee that started this year. We will get to more information about that in a little bit into the slideshow. So a little bit of background about mentorship for this year. Sorry, as many of you know, mentorship has been a constantly evolving thing happening in the background, involving the local union. Through, the funds came through, parts of the funds came through Provincial Settlement Agreement, where we had a lot of sum of money to conduct mentorship in the district. We also have a letter of understanding that any unused remedies in remedy time goes into a fund that we are able to access for mentorship after the third year. Last year, we added a Mentorship Committee to the NDTA Standing Committees. And at the beginning of this year, the committee started working on shaping meaningful mentorship program and shifting the pedagogy behind how we run the program and to provide for early career educators as well as those educators interested in developing further skills in subject areas that have nuanced shifts in delivery. While the committee developed what Nora will be presenting later, we continue to provide the Professional Learning Mentorship Program. The Professional Learning Mentorship Program provides four release days in total to be used between a mentor and a mentee to engage in their own learning or learning together. This year, there were 79 approved partnerships across the district, from Seaview to Lady Smith Secondary, spanning across all grade levels and high school specialties. Topics surrounding assessment practices, outdoor learning integration, literacy, numeracy, and many more topics that teachers have been so excited to have the chance to work with their colleagues to refine their skills and their teaching abilities. A few pieces of data that came out of the applications were there were 44 partnerships that were focused on, or in elementary, and then there was 32 based at the secondary level. So we kind of, we got a nice spread across our elementary and our secondary colleagues. And then another piece of information was there was 47 of these mentorships or partnerships that were focused around a teacher with less than 10 years of experience, and 32 of them involved teachers with more than 10 years of teaching behind them. So there was a nice spread to allow for a lot of learning to happen, both for early career teachers, but also for teachers that just wanted to learn the new stuff that's coming through. And this is where I will pass it over to Nora.
I'm much smaller than him, and I'm sitting on a much lower chair. I feel like I should be getting a telephone book. Do we have telephone books on the mark? Okay, so I'm just going to speak to what the committee was up to this year. In the beginning, there was a lot of conversations around the mentorship philosophy and how mentorship is a building block to supporting teachers and them thriving and being successful in their careers. We're talking careers in terms of, you know, a lifelong commitment. We looked over the application process that had been in place. We did some revisions on it so that teachers could effectively access the program. And then we began to formalize the approval of the process and to ensure transparency in the applications and that their goals met the goals of our program. And the kind of little cap at the end of this year was really awesome. There was myself, the elementary chair, and two of our other members. We were able to attend the Teacher Mentorship BC Conference in Richmond, and we're able to collaborate and network with mentors, mentors who run the programs, speaking about the mentees and the mentors, how we can make our mentorship program that much more successful. Then, these are some of the goals that we sort of started to establish at the end of our first year. So we wanted to continue to foster meaningful collaboration with other mentorships around the province. When we went to the conference, we were able to speak to people from Surrey. There was people from Kelowna, and it was interesting just to see how everyone kind of tweaked their mentorship program to fulfill their needs. But something that we all agreed on is that it really focused on allowing those new teachers and even the older teachers who are teaching in new areas to either get excited about it, have the skills and capacity to thrive as a successful teacher. We also are going to move forward, and we're going to be aware of talking to the teachers and see how their experience in mentorship has impacted their craft and how they see it affecting their students. We're also going to be providing training for mentors, building a bank of mentor teachers that have a deeper understanding of mentorship. And then finally, well, not finally, one more after, consider ways to incorporate the TTOCs in the program as well, who are our future, our future new teachers. And there were some interesting outcomes that we kind of observed from our program this year. There was amongst the mentors, there was a leadership ability that sort of was sparked in a lot of our mentors. We saw sort of an increased confidence, a little bit of an acknowledgement of their experience and their knowledge. And that was really enhancing. They found the relationships in their school itself and strengthening that staff. And then there was also a format that allowed collaboration between different schools as well. And it really, we found, especially because, you know, the mentors started talking, and they heard there was other ones out there and other people needed or were excited about it, is that it really began to support our district initiatives in terms of just the numeracy, the literacy. And there was a really awesome sort of mentorship mentee that went on about our new outdoor ed programs as well. So I think that was the end of that. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Give everyone a quick second, and I'll just say, I'm really excited to see this program really take off, and it sounds like it's really starting to thrive, which is really fantastic because giving opportunities to create these partnerships and these connections amongst colleagues is not only good for them, but it's really good for our students. So I'm really excited to see everyone being able to take advantage of this. Chantel, you have a comment?
I'm gonna echo Leanne. She kind of took the words right out of my mouth. I'm so glad that this is going through. Mentorship has been like one of those things where I've heard many, many teachers in my life say that has been critical to helping them feel that they can do the job in the way that they want to do the job too, right? So I'm just really thankful that this is going forward, that you've done so much really thoughtful process work to on this, that they're given a good process to do this and a good... that they're given a good process to do this and a great way forward. I'm just thankful, thankful for all your work, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to add one more quick note, which you actually reminded me of, Chantel, is in speaking with the mentors and the mentees, and I can speak from a long-term teacher, it really broke through the isolationism that we can get when we've been in other positions for a while, teaching the same subjects, moving schools and not knowing and becoming, you know, a little bit suspect of, oh, I have to get to know more people. So it really broke through that sort of isolationism that is totally possible in this career, in these jobs.
Thank you so much, that is absolutely fantastic, thank you.
Hi, sorry. So yeah, I love the idea of just even the image of saying, building a bank of mentors. Like I just, I have this whole image in my head of like, I don't know, hundreds of like, all these different versions and levels of mentors, and that's just so powerful and amazing. But as you said something about the TTOCs, my dog started barking, so I missed what you said. Was it that it's new that TTOCs can access the mentorship program, or?
We were going to incorporate that into one of our goals, is to reach out and ensure that the TTOCs know that it is available for them, whether it's classroom management, just things that will prepare them to be able to step confident into a classroom of their own.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you so much.
All right, I don't see any more questions. There is a thank you there from Naomi. So I just want to reiterate that, thank you so much for coming and sharing this update on the mentorship program, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, have a wonderful night.
All right, moving on to senior staff reports. Item 8.1, Secretary Treasurer Mark Walsh alongside Pete Sable, Executive Director of Planning and Operations, and Brian Hackwood, Assistant Director of Planning and Operations, are going to discuss school project planning. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Chair. And if I could ask Brian to turn the camera on for a moment as well, please. Thank you, Brian. So this evening, where you'll see that there is a memo with supporting documentation of a variety of processes with respect to the way that facilities, planning, and implementation flows in the district. And Pete and Brian are both here to speak to that. You'll see the motion, this is in part response to the motion that's in the agenda that was passed a few meetings ago. But we thought it would be a great opportunity to kind of show everyone how that process works. Sometimes it's bulky, but you know, there's risk management perspectives, there is, there's ensuring that the appropriate parts of learning, the appropriate sections of facilities are all aware of what's happening as we go through the processes. Before however, we get into that, I do want to take a moment to recognize the imminent departure through retirement, Mr. Brian Hackwood. A stellar performer, and it's been such a pride, such a, I've been very proud and honored to be able to work with Brian and his always positive demeanor, even though when I do come and visit on my Friday welcomes, it's always worried that I'm going to ask him to do something, but he'll do it anyway. So I can let Pete maybe say a few words about Brian, and then we can turn over to a little bit more about the memo, but we'd prefer to focus the memo on questions. But Pete, if, Chair, if you'd indulge Mr. Sable to say a few more words in honor of Mr. Hackwood, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Brian, I just wanted to thank you for all your assistance and contributions over the years, over the decades. Your work in assistance on planning, construction, maintenance, HR, et cetera, has significantly supported and shaped the department and assisted students in the school district. For that, we'll be eternally grateful. Your dedication is second to none for the school district and the time you're there. I wish you all the best in your retirement from your excellent career at the school district, thank you.
Through the chair. Thanks for the kind words, everybody, this is, it was a tough decision to make, I'm really going to miss this place. Enjoyed the decades of work here. And at this point, that's all I'm going to say, thanks, thanks a lot, I really appreciate it.
So I'll turn it over to Pete, just in a moment, Chair. So the one thing I do want to focus on, you'll see this information that's shared. One of the things that we are talking about, and Mr. Sable and I are having a conversation about constantly, Mr. Balcom and Ms. Poulon as well, is how we encourage and share and communicate how processes work within the system, because I know that's been a bit of a frustration at times, as well as trying to get to a place where individuals at the school level are able to see the status of their project. So I think in our system right now, everyone understands, we've got so much to do, we can be very busy, things do get delayed, but it's sure nice to know approximately when something's going to happen, and perhaps the reason for the delay as well. So that's a focus for us, is communication going forward. But again, you'll see the processes, processes are here, we're happy to answer questions, and I'll throw it to Pete to give a bit more context before questions, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Walsh, through the chair. And of course, we're always trying to meet that delicate balance of inclusion of stakeholders and making sure everybody's aware, but also not being too bureaucratic. So it's a bit of a knife edge at times in order to get projects out. I did want to indicate that Brian has put together quite a comprehensive document. It talks a little bit about the submission process and the cycle for projects, which is kind of the macro view, and then it talks about the micro on page 37, where it actually lays out a specific garden project. I think the key to what is presented here today with respect to the, with respect to the site requests, is that the district has yet to develop the land use guidelines as indicated in the ESAP. And there's a comment in the document about that. And then of course, the guidelines will be developed along the lines of how the projects are laid out on page 37. So staff will create what is essentially a project to develop guidelines, and then they'll follow the project process to develop those guidelines and get an approval at the end. And then use those guidelines to help us to speed up projects where the ESAP guidelines are affected. And I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. And turn it over to Brian in case he has anything to add before questions.
No, I just maybe like to say, we're right in the process, we've just, we're coming right up on the June 28 deadline for input. So half the schools have put in their requests, we're waiting for all the other half. The rest will most likely flood in right at the end of the month.
Perfect, thanks. I really appreciate the detail of this. In my previous role, having gone through a massive project with the district, I realized the stress it puts on our staff. So I really appreciate just allowing our parents to know exactly the steps that need to be taken and the involvement that is needed. Greg, you have a question?
To staff, thank you for the presentation, and congratulations, Brian, much deserved. I guess this is really helpful, and I appreciate that you took the time to put this together. And I'm looking forward to the development of the land use planning guidelines. I'm wondering, you know, we've been receiving a fair amount of interest, you know, members of the community presenting to the board with sort of more operational issues related to, you know, different improvements they'd like to see around our schools. And is there a way that this could be used to provide a level of confidence perhaps, or, you know, some direction to parents who might be wanting to present to the board, but we could kind of direct them to this other document?
Greg, I'm not sure if you cut out there?
Oh my goodness, I've been having trouble with my mic, my apologies. How far did I get before I cut out?
You were talking about whether there's a way to kind of educate the community about the process, because there's a lot of interest coming kind of directly to the board.
Thank you, so if I could continue, yes. So just, you know, I'm thinking with all this thought that's went into this, is there a way where we could kind of formalize a process where if there are members in our community who want to raise concerns that they know, you know, with these types of more operational items, here's step A, step B, step C, so they don't have to come to the board?
Sure, through you, Chair. So with respect to, we've been contemplating, because of course, there'll be land use guidelines with respect to the use of certain plans. We have been talking to a potential AP with respect to kind of highlighting some of these processes, so they're more kind of public than our internal documents as well. That doesn't necessarily address, I'm a parent that's concerned about speeding in school X, what do I do in that particular case? But we can put our minds to that with respect to, I'm a parent and I just want to know how things work at schools because my playground has taken, you know, two years to get off the ground. That's the type of AP that we're contemplating. And so I could see that coming, not like in the next month, but in the next year.
Just as a follow-up, please, Chair? Okay, I saw your handshake there. Yeah, so okay, that's great. So, you know, I kind of think about these kind of situations where, you know, a parent will want to raise a specific issue that isn't really for the board at a governance level, and wanting to make sure that from our level as the overseers of the system that we know that there's a process for those community members to follow, and we can direct them to that process and have confidence that there's timelines and processes and the people identified who they need to speak to.
Thank you, I'll take that away. And what I will say is, I certainly know that our superintendent receives concerns and, you know, informs them out to the appropriate people. As I receive direct concerns as well, and so, but we certainly are able to take that into consideration to at least, so people are aware where they can make those connections as well, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll just add a comment from our Deepak, as I think they have an issue with getting on to speak, that, you know, potentially, they go and talk to them first. I think if we can have that laid out somewhere too, because I think a lot of the times, some of the frustrations could be alleviated on that aspect, because they can have discussions during their partner group meetings as well. Tanya, you have a question?
Yes, thank you for the report and presentation. Just following up, Mark, I hadn't thought about this, but then when you said AP, if there's going to be an AP, one of the things I feel like you guys have taught us is that if there's an AP, it links to a policy. Would there be a new policy, would it be an old, would it just go back to currently existing policies?
So through you, Chair, the policy committee is in the final throes of bringing some recommendations forward with respect to the framework, not specific changes to policies, but the framework of the policy. And so we would, part of that discussion, and obviously the board will have to pass it, but is a direct connection between APs and policies. So if there's going to be an AP, there will be a policy associated with it. So the intention would be yes. So the board supports, you know, robust community involvement in the, you know, or parent involvement in the planning of schools and sites, et cetera, et cetera, and then the AP outlines this process.
Yeah, or the board supports transparency, or?
Yes.
What's the word, immediate, not immediate communication, but timely communication? Okay, thank you, that's what I'm looking for, thank you very much.
Great discussion, and thank you for taking the time to do that. This really helps the public understand better, helps us understand better as well. I, this is just a curiosity question on page 29 in the, in the agenda. It says, note that emergent school projects can be considered outside of this process by contacting the appropriate assistant superintendent, that would be the administration of the school, that would contact the appropriate superintendent and stuff like that. But could you give us an example of what an emergent school project would be, perhaps?
I can start, Chair. So a perfect example, we have a student that happens to have a bolting issue, as an example. And so in order for them to actually fully participate in school, there's got to be a fence, or there's got to be some kind of barrier that's going to create accessibility in the sense that we're not putting the student in danger. So the student comes to school, enrolls on October the 15th, well, that's well past what our, what our date would be. And so that typically would flow from the principal to Carrie Steele, who then would work with, well, would formerly have worked with Brian, so, but, to try to expedite that, because there is, obviously, there's a difference between a buddy bench, which is a nice, nice to have, and an accessibility issue, which is a need to have.
Thank you. It's funny when we talk about a barrier as being an accessibility issue, but I totally understand what you're talking about, because that is exactly what it is. I appreciate that, thank you.
If I could chime in, Chair, just a little bit, that's a great example. There are also many more, like access and inclusion, there's security, there's room use changes to support operations, and there... Oh, I think I might have froze.
You did.
Okay, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, and those have to be fit into the system alongside of all the current project approvals. And that's one of the challenges of the system, is to not overprogram staff and not leave room for some of the immersion items coming in. But that's an ongoing issue that staff attempt to manage, thank you.
A lot of fires to put out during the year, that's for sure. And I thank you for all your hard work, congratulations, Brian. I hope that your retirement is fantastic, you get to enjoy yourself now. Thank you very much for your service in our district, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more questions. So thank you so much for the report, and I'll just kind of echo Brian, congratulations, we're all jealous.
Thank you.
Get out and find some great hobbies.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so we'll move on to 8.2. Mr. Walsh is going to talk to us about our carbon neutral report.
Great, thanks, Chair. And so just for the public, so you're aware, we've actually updated the memo that's in the agenda. So we have sent it to trustees, it's on the public website, but if you've printed out the previous agenda, it's a slightly different memo, mainly to do with formatting. So first of all, I need to recognize that Mary Zuccaro from our Facilities Department is the driving force behind energy and working closely with Kevin in over there, and Pete, of course. And so on a yearly basis, we're required to report out our carbon use, both a provincial requirement, but obviously, at least up until the time that we pass a strategic plan, but it's in the environmental plan, it was a specific goal to reduce the emissions on a yearly basis in the district. On a district basis, we have not succeeded in our goal with respect to the 4.5% reduction per year. That's due to a couple of things. One, it was a fairly ambitious target. Two is the fact that COVID hit. And so COVID, of course, required increased ventilation. We still have a certain amount of increased ventilation, but we also have increased filtration as well. So we're talking as the systems are working harder to warm areas needed to be, as well as pushed through the system. So that's fundamentally one of the major reasons that you see, actually, an increase in some, particularly in the 21 year, which was huge, we're starting to drop again. Another change to note is we are still growing, so we open space. Typically, we open, that means additional carbon usage, not necessarily if it's electrified heat pumps, as an example. The other big change too is, in previous years, we did not have our fleet electrification shown in our, in our numbers, which is pretty sad actually, because that's been a big drive of this board, is the electrification of not only our bus fleet, but... fleet, but our white fleet as well. And so now what you see is we've included those numbers for our fleet in our overall numbers, which has also increased because of course, they weren't counted before. So there are a lot of successes though. And on page two of the new report, you'll see some of the projects and their direct savings of carbon. And then of course, you'll see the plan for next year. So the reduction strategy, we do want to acknowledge BC Hydro for their continued support in the district generally, plus helping fund a position in facilities. So you'll see moves towards, and again, Mary's not here, we gave her the night off, but boy, has she been such a champion of finding low hanging fruit. And now we're moving up from low hanging to mid, the mid level fruit, so to speak. But you will see on page three of that report, a variety of other things that we're going to be doing. And so automation of systems is fundamental. And so, you know, next time you come for a tour of facilities, we can show you how, you know, Mary or Kevin can change the temperature at the gym at Pleasant Valley with the stroke of a keyboard, as an example. And so that's huge, because now we're going to get a sense if we're having heat loss, or we can control it when kids are not there, even better than just a system that's set for a certain time. So as we're using technology in addition to the actual upgrading of our facility, so it's positive there. And of course, you know, we've got big, big projects like Brecken coming through to lower GHG emissions. So in reality, without additional external funds, we will not be meeting the target that we've set for ourselves. And so that's an unfortunate one, of course, but we are on the right track. And I think we have a really strong team, and I just, I want to recognize them. But of course, we need to hold ourselves accountable. And we're not going to meet, we're not going to meet that target. So I'm happy to answer questions. We continue to apply for funding, and you'll see that later in tonight's agenda. There's funding for environmental upgrades requests coming as well.
Thanks, Mark. Greg, you have a question?
Yes, thank you through you to staff. Thank you for the report. And I recognize Mary's not here, so we might not have an answer right now, and that's okay. I want to acknowledge that we recognize that we have an ambitious goal. And without adequate funding, we're not going to meet that goal, but at least we're measuring and we know where we are. And that's a big step in the right direction. And I'm just looking at the pie chart on page two, and the big thing that sticks out is that 74 and a half percent of our greenhouse gas emissions is from building use. And that strikes me in the sense that, you know, I think we've done fantastic work, and we focused a lot on, you know, upgrades where we can. But it makes me wonder, given that such a large proportion of our greenhouse gas emissions comes from buildings, and our funding related to greenhouse gas emissions is quite limited, what opportunities do you see for the board to raise the profile of this issue and advocate for shifts in the funding allocations related to greenhouse gas emissions for building use? And especially given that, you know, maybe not in all systems, but I'm making an assumption that as the student population increases, and we have at least more sites, it's going to be more and more of a challenge to reduce the overall emissions, given that we potentially are operating larger and or more facilities.
Sure. So through you Chair, and Mr. Sabo, he's back online, he's reset, so he might be able to help as well. But the reality, the reality is, is that that pot is going to be limited. However, in our experience, and Pete can speak more to this, the ministry has been incredibly responsive for, as Pete would say, synergistic projects. So if you think about Solera as an example, us kind of coming in at the last minute when it wasn't initially funded to do some work there with respect to whether it happened. So that's great news. You know, we look, and when we think about LIS is another example. So, you know, we're making, we're soon to be making the pitch about why there should be a new build, and why this should be supported. Well, the environmental aspect of that is going to be right at the forefront of the argument that we're making, because it aligns with not only the board's goals, but aligns with the ministry's goals. So I will trumpet the work of, I mean, yes, the pot needs to be bigger if we're going to achieve our aim. But whenever there's been an opportunity, the ministry has been very proactive in reaching out to us. So our bus fleet is a great example of where they've come through time after time with additional funds for infrastructure or for busing, that we didn't, that we weren't anticipating. So I think, I think if I was to recommend an advocacy, it would be reflecting that, of course, we need more money if we want to make this faster, but also that they have done well by us generally, I would suggest.
Thank you.
I don't know if Pete has anything more to add. I do. Just last week, the Energy Manager, Mary, and myself were at the Educational Facilities Managers Association Conference. We had a chance to speak to some of the ministry officials and ask questions. We asked specifically that question. The answer we got was that the ministry has been slowly increasing pots of money that can be applied to projects such as you're indicating, Trustee Keller. And while I agree with and support everything Mark has said, they also indicated that if it's a priority to the board, they can focus their approvals and their requests on those types of projects. And so we have an opportunity to do exactly as Mark said, as well as focus some of them on our SEP, CNCP asks, et cetera, and show that as a priority to us. The ministry also indicated that if we had information or larger plans we wanted to share with them, we were welcome to call them at any time and share. And Mary, Zakaro and I are planning to take some of the GHG study information that we're collecting, when it's ready, and present to the ministry the types of projects and money that would be required to meet those targets.
That's fantastic. Can I ask one follow up? Do we know if there's any correlation to our GHG emissions and building use to the age of our facilities? Or is that just highly dependent on what upgrades have been done over the years?
Through the Chair, I would suggest that the older building, the higher the greenhouse gas consumption generally, the type of construction would not be as tight, if it will, if you would. I believe also, however, it's, as we upgrade buildings, we upgrade with systems that heat more air to provide more ventilation, that provide more, that cost more to heat. We also, again, are looking at low carbon electrification aspects for that. And when you electrify, the utility costs a bit more, but it's got less greenhouse gas. And so it's difficult to generally, to generalize, but, but I would say that yes, the older buildings can cost us more, generally, if they haven't received targeted upgrades.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks so much. I don't see any more questions. So we'll move on to 8.3. Secretary Treasurer Mark Walsh and Associate Secretary Treasurer Tonya Sutton, RE the Multi-Year Financial Plan.
Great. So thank you Chair. So the item starting on page 41 of the agenda is required by the Ministry of Education and Childcare with respect to another aspect of its accountability measures. And so the idea is, is that we want to be looking three years in advance to see where the district is going with respect, particularly obviously to financial resources. The report is just in draft form now. We just want to bring it to the board because we have most of the information. However, the intention is to bring it back with the ESAL in September to be clearly delineate and connect the direction that the board and DLS will be going with respect to the new board goals and aligning them to our financial resources. And so this is just to get a quick, a quick first look, remind the board about what the three-year financial plan is. Also to give us a bit of a sense of where we're going with respect to enrollment, and potential risk factors that could impact our ability to provide the level of service that we're providing now. Generally, we're again, looking pretty good in the sense that we're projecting growth, slower than this, slower than the year we're coming up. So we're going up by over 200 in September. We're predicting a little bit less than 100 for the next few years, but still a positive impact on enrollment generally. Obviously, if housing starts and family formation change, and we see more kids, that's great. But obviously, there's a risk to the other direction. So not, it's just that initial document that we wanted to bring forward, it'll be, it'll be more fleshed out in September in alignment with the ESAL, but we wanted to bring it forward, and we'll be back in September with more. So I'm happy to answer any questions. However, it's just important that we're keeping these accountability tools in the forefront of the board's mind.
Thank you. I think my camera has just changed now. So now I'm looking in the wrong area here. I look directly at you folks. So I was looking through this, and I realized this is like a forecast, right? It's not exactly the budget. It is a budget that we look at to, or that we show to the ministry for long-term plans and things like that. Be so great if they would ask us for a needs-based budget. That would be super awesome. But at this point, it's not. So I appreciate sort of a bit of a more of a conservative look as well to the growth in our numbers, because we don't know that it's going to actually grow quite a bit. But I do know that we are looking at a growth in students. And I'm going to bring this up, that we are looking at a growth in students with designations in the books. And I think that's just kind of standard across the province as well, as more students receive their assessments and are able to get their designations. But I see that we haven't really added more EAs to the roster of the staffing FTX expense estimates on page 56, 108. And I'm wondering, is that going to be looked at again throughout the summer before we come back in September? Is that something more that, that we could take a look at and sort of plan for a bit more in regards to that?
Sure. So through you Chair, so this will, this is loosely related to what the actual preliminary budget of for the 2025, 2026 school year is going to look like. So this is, this document does not bind the board, frankly, in any way. So certainly, we could change those numbers. And then, you know, I don't know where, what that puts us from a deficit surplus perspective. But certainly, there'd be no, there's nothing preventing us from doing that. We just picked, we picked the annual budget for this year and carried it forward is all, is all that we did. Just because, and the reason you see more teachers is because that's directly correlated to additional FTE, whereas EAs are not directly correlated to additional FTE. So it's just a choice. It's, we don't, we don't know that there'll be more, we don't know that there'll be less. Although, to your point, we are predicting additional, additional designations in those years. So nothing that would stop that.
Yeah, if we could, I would recommend that we look at increasing that forecast. It just shows that we are committed to student outcomes, students with designations and their outcomes, graduation and stuff like that, because we're looking at about 60. If this were the, the actual budget, we're looking at 60 more students and with no more EAs. So, and we're going to put recruitment and retention aside for just a moment and pretend that, you know, the world is amazing and we can access as many as we want. But it just shows a commitment to that inclusion aspect and making sure that the students and the teachers themselves receive the supports that they need to be able to successfully thrive in our classrooms. That would be really awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you Chair, I, I got, was listening to Chantel, and she said something interesting, and I just want to confirm, this is not the kind of document that would be appropriate for anything needs-based, hey? This is very much a specific projection-based current formulas, right?
Yes.
As opposed to...
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
No, just as opposed to saying, as to what, a needs-based, what we believe we need to run a healthy, successful system scenario, which is a bit more admittedly, I won't say pie in the sky, because that's not fair. But am I making sense? I hope you...
Yes. So
Thank you.
Through you Chair, the kind of guidance that we've used and the document that we created in the past aligns with, I think, the ministry's expectations. So you're taking realistic estimates versus realistic expenditures, and you're not, we're not making up additional revenue in the sense that we're not saying, oh, the ministry is going to fund us a whole bunch more, and we're not creating additional expenses that in reality, we would not, so we would never, ever, if we made a new needs budget, we're going to be projecting deficits, which is, I don't think, I don't think the intent of this particular document. So it does, I mean, what it says to the community, in my opinion, is it says, and there'll be more connection to the ESAL coming up. That's why it's important that those things are together. So we can say, here's the change in focus, and here's where additional funds might be expended. But what it says to the community is, we anticipate stability, right? Whereas if you're going the other direction with enrollment, you're going to be saying to the community, get ready, there's, there's going to be some cuts coming. And not, not that this is the end result. There, we may well be due to inflationary issues in a place where we might have to look at reductions. If we get more students or there's more funding, we may well be looking at additional programming, but we're just not there.
Wait, forgive me colleagues, I'm going to ask this question because I've heard it from parents before, and I keep forgetting to ask it. So where then is the right place or the best place to do some advocacy around things that people have said to me, like, our philosophical beliefs of a healthy school should have, every school should have, I'm making things up, a coal mining program, every school should have a full-time librarian or this, or, and a music program. Where is the place to advocate those things, let the ministry know that those are the things that our community values and believes? And I don't know that they do. I'm just sharing conversations I've had with, within the community, and a question I've been asked multiple times.
So two, two points, I think, in response, is first, I think that's a bit of a board discussion, right? So, hey, we want to write to the ministry and say that we need additional funds to achieve our aims. The second part, though, would be, I think that what would also happen, though, is that at the appropriate report, so, you know, the superintendent comes and makes a report about how we're doing in X, Y, or Z, and the trustees say, well, what are the strategies to improve this? Or if, you know, if we had additional resources, what were the things that you would do? Then you would, then, then you'd be able to incorporate more specifics into that ask. If pay equity was fixed, we'd have $2 million, and we'd be able to invest more in X, Y, or Z as recommended by the staff to support the strategic plan. I would perhaps, I mean, it could just be a letter asking for more, but I would, I think that even when you're, when the board would be asking for additional resources, either it's generic, because we think we can achieve more, but before, before saying it's a librarian, I'm not saying that's what you're asking for, but it's a librarian in every class, I would also say that it's important that the board is aligned with the superintendent's, you know, implementation strategy with respect to the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Excuse me. Thanks, Mark. I don't see any more questions. So we'll move on to 8.4. Policy Committee Update, Childcare Policy.
Great. So thank you Chair. So on the, the policy committee's work plan this year was a childcare policy. It's been on there for a couple of years now. And so what happened is a few years back, there was a requirement for the board to have a policy or AP in the case of, in the case of, when the ministry says it has to be a policy, it can be an administrative procedure. So in order to be compliant, we So in order to be compliant, we brought forward an AP that outlined all of the requirements of the ministry with respect to that particular policy. And then, so what the policy committee did was kind of took a look at what aspects of the AP are more policy direction than they are kind of procedure, procedural matters and have come up with with this. You will see attached is the AP as it currently exists as well. Because until the board actually passes the policy or at the very least puts it out to community feedback, we didn't want to change the AP. So there'll be repetition that will be ultimately deleted from the AP because some things land in policy. So a couple of important points to note. So you'll see the board's commitment to hulcamenum, to reconciliation, to accessibility and support student outcomes. So that's the message to our providers as well as our own internally provided services. Those are important aspects of anyone that's going to be doing childcare services in our in our district. And so we, as a district currently under the School Act, are limited to only before and after school care for students registered in our system. So we couldn't do zero to five if we wanted based off of that restriction, but this would apply to to everyone. It highlights the limitations on what we can charge, both what we can charge for before and after school care if we provide it, as well as what we can charge to the rental of our facilities for the provision of third party provision. You'll also see the preference or the commitment to in-house services where feasible. And then it also outlines essentially the kind of board's role in approving the expansion or the approving of the deletion of certain childcare programs. And so an example would be we every time we've ever gone, and you'll see one tonight, to build a new program or a childcare facility. The board approved approves the request in the past. It was to the Ministry of Children and Families. And now there's a new capital program. So you'll you will be approving that based off this policy. You always have, but it's just reflective. The other thing, however, that will happen is the board will be asked to approve the expansion or deletion of our own internal provided services. So the board approved again two to three sites. They were generic in nature. And so the, you know, they'll end up being, as we expect, Hammond Bay, Rutherford's in the works and one other. But we would come to the board first to say we'd like to expand by three more. If we wanted to expand how many seats, however, in a currently existing board provided before and after school care, that would be left to staff to make a determination. The other thing that the policy does, and this is in response to some of the concerns that have been raised last number of years, is we made. So when the new programming came out and the so we've had Forest Park and Chase River and Rock City. Georgia's about to finish up. So what we've said is we put out a request of interest and qualification for the services to be provided. And we've had certain providers come back and say, well, wait, we want to provide the services there. And they indicated like that we didn't give them an opportunity. We did, of course. We had it our REIQ and we advertised it. We had a second REIQ, in fact, to two years later to to kind of make sure that it was advertised as far and wide and everyone had an opportunity as possible. But it also commits to us having future opportunities for interested providers in just to make sure that there's a kind of fairness and parity. And then I think final one to note is there is an encouragement, not a requirement, but an encouragement that third party providers provide their employees a living wage. And so, again, just reflecting the board's commitment to to our to employees, whether they're ours or not. And then, of course, the connections between the early learning programs in our our district are highlighted there. I just want to make one, if the board proceeds, the idea would be is that we would go, the board, we recommend to the board tonight, and then the board determines whether it's going to send it out for public consultation. It would likely come back to the policy committee for with the feedback, then either come directly to back to the business committee if there's major changes or directly to the board if there's not. I want to make one change that I I did miss, policy committee feedback. And that's in purpose. And so when the if the board passes it, I would like the board to to keep in mind the purpose statement. The second sentence has said, the board also believes that the provision of such services should be inclusive and advance indigenous reconciliation. So there should be a comma after inclusive and say culturally appropriate, comma, accessible and advance indigenous reconciliation. And that would be changed by the board meeting. I just wanted to point that out this evening. So I'm happy to answer questions. I know trustees Keller and trustee trustee Morvey are also here as members of the policy committee. But I'm happy to respond to any concerns or questions.
Thanks, Mark. Chantel, you have a comment?
I appreciate it so much, Mark. I didn't get to go to that policy meeting where they discussed the daycare, the childcare programs. And I really appreciate you adding that in there. I think that's really, really important. It might be repeating ourselves a little bit sometimes in some of these things, but sometimes that's a necessary thing for for folks to really truly understand that we are very committed to it. And important to have highlighted in our purpose, for sure. Thank you for your hard work and looking forward to the feedback. I see Jeff has a comment to questions. Thanks.
Jeff.
Thanks for doing, Chair. Yeah, just a quick comment and a couple of questions. On the action sheet, just like to acknowledge, right near the bottom there, the policy sets out that the board's preference for before and after school service be provided in-house where feasible. We just want to acknowledge that and just thank you for the support of that. QP is hugely supportive of that. No surprise there. So just wanted to acknowledge and say thank you for that. I can just ask one question and then come back on if somebody else has a question. On page one of the of the policy, I don't know what page it is in the agenda, sorry, but of the draft policy, right near the bottom, it talks about direct and indirect costs, what they include. And under D, it says a reasonable allowance for the cost of providing custodial services. So I'm curious if this means that we can get back the custodial duties that we're not doing with the first leases that we signed?
Sure. So the intent there is in the event that a provider, like a third party provider, is in a kind of co use space, they're not on a license agreement, like completely separate, then custodial services would be there. The other thinking too was is that we need to ensure that if we're providing the before and after school care, we need to be charging for the custodial service appropriately, of course. So if it's a shared classroom, you're not charging the full the full service. But we just need to be very careful that we're not subsidizing, you know, an unfunded program with K to $12. So the intent was not to bring back like the the spaces that are completely licensed out. The intent is to to make it very clear that where we're providing the service or where a third party provider has to have the service because it's co space, that that's covered off in the direct and indirect costs.
You want me to wait for the next question or?
You go ahead, Jeff. No one else has any questions at this moment.
Hey, thanks. On the second page of the, thanks for that, Mark. On the second page of the draft policy there, number two, fees, two point two, it talks about restrictions of the School Act. We've seen the School Act change quite recently on a couple of different things. So I guess my question is, if the School Act changes, do we need to revisit the policy? Or does that just kind of become null and void if the School Act changes?
So through you, Chair, I would suggest that we would be able to come back and just ask the board to amend it. It would be a redundant statement because there wouldn't be a restriction, like it would be always as pursuant to the to the School Act. But if it does change to allow students that aren't enrolled and so zero to five, and we want to provide that service, I would still bring it back to the board just for clarity.
Thank you.
All right. Is there someone that is willing to move the recommended motion? If needed, I can read it out. What, Chantel?
Sure. I'll move the motion. The Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty Eight, and I'm Elie Smith, receive the draft policy childcare services in early years programs and circulate as a notice of motion for thirty days utilizing the consultation process as per Board Governance, Section One, Two Point Seven, Policy Development. I think because of the 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 small changes that we're made today that Mark talked about, I wonder if that motion should read.
Sorry, Chantel. I just wanted to see if you want to amend the motion, just because I want to see if someone wants to second it.
Well, that's what I actually have a question about because I wonder if we should add the as revised. Because it's not exactly as is as it is here. So maybe we should just go to seconding the motion and then having it on the floor and go from there.
Yeah, we can ask Mark for clarification.
Sounds great.
Greg, are you willing to second that?
Yes, but I'd like to actually call a point of order and just ask Mark if he would mind answering that question. And maybe I should not have seconded that because it would be easier if Chantel just read a motion as amended, if that's required.
So through you, Chair, so it was presented including the language. So I would say we're fine. And by the time it gets to the board, the language will be included. If if there's a concern about clarity or transparency, then I would just I would include the word revised. I don't think it's necessary in the circumstances. It says it was introduced to be including those that those words.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so just so we're clear, we have Chantel moving the motion. Greg, you're still fine with seconding it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Chantel, did you want to motivate?
From what I said before, I think it's a good policy. It's pretty solid. I think it's got some really good highlighted points in here that are really important to have. And I think the Policy Committee and those in the background working to write this, I really appreciate the work that that was put into this. Thank you.
Right. So I don't see anyone else commenting, so just call that question. And if anyone is opposed to the motion carrying, could you just type it in the chat? Okay, so seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to eight point five. The proposed twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six five year capital plan with Mark Walsh, Pete Savo and David Penner, our Facilities Planning Manager.
Great. So thank you, Chair. And David, if you want to come on, we can introduce David, who is not new to the district, but new to the role of Facilities Planning Manager. So again, thank you. It's been a little while. David is leading the the final throes of getting Lady Smith Intermediate ready for submission. And so thank you for all that work that you're doing and for for the work with this, this what we're seeing tonight. So what you're seeing this evening, board, is you're very used to the five year capital plan submission at this point for with respect to major capital. And so, thanks, Pete and team, it outlines the various major and minor capital programs. We'll get to the minor in just a moment. So the major ones, of course, being seismic, very important for our district, particularly with respect to reading some recent updated seismic information about the West Coast, I think, needs to be on the front and center of people's minds. School expansion, school replacement, rural districts program, building envelope, and then childcare is a new addition. So now we don't have to kind of go through two different processes, which we think is is excellent news. So with respect to childcare, you'll see a few places of integrating additional spaces at projects that are proceeding, as well as you'll see the Rutherford idea. And so two, two things here. One, of course, is Davis Road is contingent upon Davis Road actually being approved. But the idea is we wouldn't want to use other pots of dollars to support that. So childcare at the site, so we would apply for childcare. At Rutherford, we do anticipate before and after being available within the school with some minor tweaks to a classroom. But what we don't want to do is give up additional spaces within the school for zero to five when we could seek additional funding to build on the property. Because, yes, Rutherford will open probably with a bit of space. You know how space goes. It's going to disappear and the opportunity to apply for additional dollars to support that is preferable than losing space voluntarily, frankly. The building envelope program, you'll see that we've added Lady Smith Intermediate here. This is a message to our community and to our ministry. Here's yet another thing that this school needs. Why would we not go with the option of building a new school at Davis Road than spend money on seismic and expansion and building envelope and 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 and? So that's more of a strategic choice. We, if we're ultimately have to do a seismic at Lady Smith, we'd also prefer to do the BEP, but that's not what we're aiming for. Site acquisition, and apologies, that's misnumbered, but you'll see Pleasant Valley, Departure Bay, Chase River, Bayview, Dover all continue to be on our site acquisition list, given the growth patterns that we are seeing. Pleasant Valley, of course, on the western southwestern end near Seaview with increased density coming to Lanceville. That's inevitable that we're going to require a school there at some point, maybe not in the immediate future. So that's why it's at the top of the list. Expansion, you'll see a trend here. We're seeking expansions at Wellington, at ND, at Dover, at Chase and at Pleasant Valley. Chase largely, I mean, we can't fit any more students really on the Chase site as it is. It already has multiple portables. And if Stan Stone does proceed, we're not going to necessarily be able to serve all those kids. And so those, that's why that is there. You'll see these year four and five numbers. We are not seriously contemplating getting any of these projects approved in the next year. But it's our way of saying to the government that, just so you know, ministry, this is where we anticipate things to be a little tight. NDSS replacement project, there's just no reason not to replace that school. The ministry knows. And then you'll see again in our next list, it's under seismic as well. And so important to note that that's a priority. They know it's a priority. But given the the lack of growth in the overall seismic pot, that's why we don't think we were successful this year. So hopefully, we can see better success in the future. So there is a draft motion and we're obviously happy to answer any questions that the board and the community might have about this. But we think we've captured the priorities pretty well. And we haven't done too too much work on the later years because just the reality of the limited amount of capital available to us means that it's not worth worth a ton of that effort at this point. I'm not sure if Pete wants to anything or we should just wait for questions.
Through through the chair, I would just add a little bit of process. So, you know, if supported by the board, then David and I would go to work. And by that, I mean, David would go to work looking to complete the paperwork and do the submission of the projects in my caps. And we would work closely with, continue to work closely with the ministry to get their advice on how to format the projects as well as through that process informing them of of the projects that we have and some of the details of the projects. So they're just not hidden in a request form that they're at the top of their minds. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much for the very detailed report. Naomi, would like to move the motion?
Just let me. Um, just one second. I just got to pull it up again. All right. So, um, this is eight point five. The Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty Eight, and I'm Elie Smith, in accordance with provisions under Section One, Four, Two, Parenthesis Four of the School Act, approve the proposed five Parenthesis Four of the School Act, approve the proposed five-year capital plan for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, as outlined in this action sheet.
Thank you, Naomi, seconded by Shantel. Naomi, did you want to motivate?
No, I don't think so. I just commend all the hard work that has, you know, been done to put this together. And that's about it.
All right, is there anyone else who has any comments? If not, we'll call the question. And if you are opposed to the motion, can you please type it in the chat, please? All right, motion carries. So we'll move on to eight point six regarding the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six five-year capital plan minor.
Great, so thank you again. And so there might be one change. We might get Mr. Sabo's internet added to one of this minor capital projects. He's just rebooting as well. So again, you'll see a robust outline of what the minor capital submission program looks like. Should be very used to this as well, except for childcare is an addition for our four districts now. Again, kudos on the Ministry for aligning that to make it a one-stop shop for applications. You will see that we are again strategizing ND and LIS, and we'll get to that in just a sec. On page eighty-two, you'll see us applying for funds for small amounts of dollars to adapt currently existing sites for before and after-school care. So Rutherford, Gabriola, where we, the Ecole Hammond Bay and Ecole North Oyster. And so you'll, you can kind of see where our thinking is from a geographic dispersment perspective and where before and after-school care, we think we might be able to provide it. The Ecole North Oyster is not on that list yet, but certainly that we still see a need there. But you'll see Rutherford, Gabe and Ecole Hammond Bay on that list. School enhancement programs, you see what is there and what we're thinking about. And at Ecole North Oyster, we're pointing out, according to the facilities plan, aligning seismic with other projects is fundamentally important. So we're not interrupting kids multiple times, particularly Eno, who had an exterior with some significant issues. And so we don't want to go in again after we seismically upgraded. You see Lady Smith Primary, again, we're expanding that school. There's things that we think that can be done. And then a whole bunch of LIS and NDSS requests associated with why those schools should not be upgraded. They should be replaced. Because if you add the value of seismic, you add the value of modernization, you add the value of accessibility and inclusion. There's just, doesn't make any sense in the fifty-year scheme of planning that those facilities shouldn't be replaced. Carbon neutral program, you'll see something a little bit different here. So our initial target is not a school. Our additional target is infrastructure upgrade at the FAC. And the reason for that is because we cannot expand our electric bus fleet any further without additional infrastructure, and it is very expensive. And so that's, that's number one. And it's an expensive project. And we do think, though, that we, the Ministry is committed to this. So there's perhaps a way for us to get kind of more money in that program than we normally would. And then finally, for folks to be able to see the pet programs, so the playground, you see Fairview, Uplands, Departure Bay. Typically, we get between zero and one a year, and that's just the priority list. So our parents are aware. Bus replacement program is there, and then the school infrastructure is there as well. So happy to answer any questions, but again, appreciative of the work. And we think that both the needs of the district priorities are being met. But in addition, this kind of, very appreciative of the strategic thinking about highlighting the needs at NDSS and LIS.
All right, thanks so much. Here's to hoping we can be successful with NDSS. Attack it from a different angle this time. I don't see any questions. Would someone like to move the motion? Mark?
Yeah. The Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight, then I will Lady Smith, in accordance with provisions under Section One, Forty-Two, Subsection Four of the School Act, approve the proposed minor capital plan for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, as outlined in this action sheet.
Do we have a seconder? So Leanna, thanks. Mark, did you want to motivate?
Yeah, there's a lot of items on this action sheet that highlight our district's commitment to our ongoing growth. And that's demonstrated by the fact that NDSS is number one at the top of that list. So good work to staff, and I commend the Board's efforts for approving us all the way to here. So let's get it going. That's it.
Thanks, Mark. I don't see any other comments, so I'll call the question. If anyone's opposed, could you please type it in the chat? All right, motion carries. Thanks so much, gentlemen, for your information. And I hope you have a great rest of your evening, if you're allowed to go home.
They're allowed to go home.
Enjoy the sun. All right, number nine, we have no correspondence referred from the regular board meeting. So number ten point one, under unfinished business, we have Laura Tate, Acting Superintendent, and Gillian Robinson, our new Executive Director of Communications, reporting out on the strategic plan consultation process. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. So the Board's strategic plan was out for public consultation for the second time for the month of May. We received feedback both online and in person. We had a variety of responses. In the feedback, we had online emails, et cetera. The in-person consultation sessions, there was an open house. We met with community partners, indigenous community partners, our integrated child youth teams, Think Corral and Health Authority, Ministry of Education and Childcare. So it was quite a robust month of feedback, for sure. Okay, so as I said, the feedback was received both in person and online. Just in your package, you have the feedback there for you, raw data, as well as the feedback was collated and then themed a couple of different ways by Gillian and her team. So before I go into each of these sort of points individually, I'll just mention that overwhelmingly, after really diving into the feedback and digesting it a bit, I would say that the vast majority of the comments were, I would take it as just maybe a lack of communication on our part, a lack maybe responders maybe either didn't understand or haven't been made aware of a lot of the things in our documents, whether it be the language, the intention, the rationale, et cetera. We could tell by the, by the responses of the questions, either explicitly that they weren't familiar with some of this terminology or some of the direction, or perhaps they didn't really understand it, or there wasn't enough information there to provide a good understanding. So the in-person feedback. So Gillian organized the first section around the plan itself. So the plan with regards to vision and mission, the feedback here was fairly neutral. If anything, there was a, you know, some positivity, but it's fairly neutral with regards to the tagline. The feedback that we received around the tagline was generally overall that it would be time for a change, perhaps a refresher or look at altering the tagline. The feedback around the guiding principles. So this was, this area was a really good example of folks out there just really not understanding, for example, the CIS framework. And that's completely understandable, that we haven't really had the opportunity yet to sort of go broadly with that, with that work, with that framework definitions, et cetera, to the system. So that, for me, just really isn't that surprising. There were some really, really good questions. And I would suggest that a number of the questions would be operational in nature, which, of course, we always welcome, a little bit more boots on the ground, that kind of feedback. The other aspect is looking at taking the three guiding principles and somehow creating or clarifying maybe one unified statement that's, that's sort of brought those three concepts together. That was some more of the feedback that we heard. Regarding the goals, very little feedback. There was one comment about including student supports. Again, very operational and really a part of what we do every day in all of our schools. But a really, really good point to bring up with us. And the other comment was around mental health, which, of course, will be included in our goal around student wellness and employee wellness and our work toward that mental health framework. So again, operational nature. And I would say the, with regards to truth and reconciliation in the in-person sessions, one of the questions was around how we sort of include our urban indigenous youth in our Advisory Council, Advisory Council. And of course, we've got Telecom Lailam Aboriginal Friendship Center, who represents that voice. And the other question was how the Inuit are represented on the Indigenous Education Committee. And there was a few more questions around that topic. And I would say that they're not well represented. I would say that's certainly an area, very few Inuit students in the district. And we haven't likely represented them well in the, on that particular committee. So certainly really good feedback, and there's always areas for growth for certain. And so the online feedback, again, you have a copy of all of this information in your package. You see the themes there on the screen around the school operations, around Jedi, truth reconciliation, and on down the list. What I would like to do at this stage here around the online feedback is just highlight something that I've made an assessment around, which is the truth and reconciliation feedback. They, there were a few areas that were pointed out as areas that we need to, we needed to go deeper in or get better at, for sure. I would say, however, that the level of responses was extremely sophisticated, very knowledgeable, and really pushing the Board to go, to do more and to go deeper. And I would say five years ago, ten years ago, I don't think we would have had such sophistication out there and the understanding and the voice. And I really value that, and I want to acknowledge that. They were really very perceptive comments and questions, and really pushing us to do more and to go deeper. So that, you know, that area and that point of accountability, I really welcome and I really appreciate. So I thought I would share that as an observation. So as was set out initially in the consultation is that the vast majority of the consultation happened earlier in the year. There was a lot of edits, reads, re-reads for months and months prior to the month of May. And the intention of this consultation during the month of May was to say, here is the plan. You know, we hope that we've heard you, we did this work. And the consultation took as many pieces of the feedback in as we could to really craft the plan as best to reflect our community and different members of our communities. And it was a bit more of that, are there a few tweaks here, here and there at this stage? And so with that in mind, we have just a few recommendations here for you to consider. We had some feedback around the guiding principles to perhaps re-review the term guiding principles to find a term that perhaps wasn't maybe as colonial in nature. It's quoted from some of the feedback there, and that's absolutely no problem to look into doing that. That's something you can absolutely do. And as I alluded to a little earlier, with the three guiding principles, environmental stewardship, the CIS framework and Jedi is creating one unifying statement. And as we know, those three concepts or principles have a lot in common, probably more in common than not. And so I think a unifying statement and graphic will really speak to that notion that these aren't separate topics or separate issues that need to consider in isolation. So next, there was a comment or some comments around the Jedi stance, the wording of Jedi stance. People were just maybe not familiar with Jedi on its own yet necessarily, and worried that it reflected a Star Wars term and thought that maybe downgraded the importance of this. And so that, again, that's an easy fix. We can prioritize justice, equity, diversity and inclusion in a title here versus Jedi stance. So that's another recommendation. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, the tagline was something that received very little positive feedback, the tagline of success for all. And largely, and there was some acknowledgement of this as well, largely the rationale behind the lack of support for that particular tagline was that the intention isn't well communicated here. And the intention, of course, for success for all is for every individual, every student, to define what success means for them and for us to support them in that success. But that's not sort of the reputation that success for all has garnered over the years. So regardless of the intention originally, it's a recommendation to change, to change up the tagline. And so after reviewing all of the feedback, digging into that feedback, overlaying that back over primarily the three goals, we had one of our staff have what I believe to be a stroke of genius. Emily Magyar, through a lot of this work and mushing around with the feedback, has provided a potential tagline of learning through belonging. Learning, of course, really touching on student success in such a big way. Belonging, of course, touching on wellness and truth and reconciliation, bringing learning and belonging together. And we know that if a learner doesn't feel a sense of belonging, and felt safe and loved and cared for, it makes learning very, very difficult. And so once we have that foundation of belonging and a sense of we're at the exact right place at the exact right time, then can our learning sort of take off to great heights. And so that recommendation is here for your consideration. And lastly, next steps, of course, will be to incorporate whichever of the recommendations, if any you feel you would like to support. We will then hopefully move to have the Board adopt the strategic plan holistically at the Board of Education meeting on June twenty-sixth. Once these formalities have been completed, of course, staff can move forward around creating a communications plan to move this plan into operational plans, departmental plans, school plans, et cetera. So thank you, Chair, and I am happy to, and Gillian and I, I'm sure Gillian's here as well, to answer any questions or commenting any feedback. So thank you, Chair, and I am happy to, and Jillian and I, I'm sure Jillian's here as well, to answer any questions or commenting any feedback.
Thank you so much, Laura. Um, some great ideas. Um, Tanya?
Thank you, Leanne, and thank you, Laura, for that presentation. Greatly appreciated it. I really like all these recommendations. I find myself wondering, I do like the proposed tagline, and I'm just wondering if it's appropriate to say this. If it's not appropriate, you can all forgive me. I would love to hear from, if not tonight, we've got two weeks before this comes forward as a formal motion. I guess I'm wondering how we can find out from particularly our partner groups, the, the proposed new tagline. Their thoughts on that. Maybe I'm looking to Jillian here from, um, I, I want to get that, get this right because success for all, I remember even when it was first adopted, there was some feeling of it got pushed on people. And that there were people who didn't like it even then. So I'm just wondering how we, with, with the two week time period, how we could do that. Yeah?
We probably, yep, go ahead, Jillian.
I'll defer to you, Laura. Go ahead.
Um, we can, we can do whatever you need. Um, and we can connect with partners. We can prioritize who those, uh, partners are. We could certainly get folks to weigh in if that's.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that. I would appreciate that. I don't know if, do you, do you guys want that as a formal motion? Or do you, is it just a suggestion we can put out there? Um, looking to my, Mark is our parliamentarian or, or the chair of the committee for your thoughts on that. I'm, I'm open to anything. I just would like to, to feel like when we go and vote on this, that I, that I have a sense of where people are with that, you know, so that we, yeah, anyway. I think I've, I'm, I'm thinking and I'm trying to talk and think at the same time, and I'm struggling. So I will stop talking and, and listen to what anyone might want to share.
Uh, thanks, Tanya. Mark, did you have a comment there?
Uh, just from a purely process perspective, if that's the, was, if the superintendent was going to be doing that or take that, uh, then I don't think you need a motion. If, if that's not part of the plan and the, and we're not interested in doing that step, then I think then you'd need a motion, but.
We're, I think, uh, through the chair, if, if I could get a bit more, um, maybe direction. So when we say partners, um, we have a lot of them. Um, it's going to be a short turnaround. So, um, we may be able to contact representatives, individual representatives, but they won't, they likely won't be able to speak on behalf of who they represent. I just think in terms of the timeline. So, um, a few more specifics, what I think would be helpful, particularly around which partner groups.
I was specifically thinking Deepak, who I see are here and actually is in the chat with a question, uh, and our staff of representative, like so, N D T A, Q P and principals, and whether they feel that that is, and C I S S, if we could.
Okay. So I'm just going to jump in here quick, Tanya.
Please.
And just, um, I'll just ask the question, um, that Jessica has provided, um, just regarding the tagline, um, and it says, how many respondents requested a new tagline? Or I can expand that to say that the existing tagline maybe needed a slight revision.
So, uh, Jillian, I think if, if you can look for the, I mean, if you want to give us a quick overview, just in the number of respondents, um, because a number of respondents for all of these, whether they be in person or online, were very low. Um, so in terms of the tagline, I'm going to, Jillian, if you want to sort of give us numbers, uh, the tagline was probably three people, three comments.
I think that's accurate, um, in terms of the people who specifically mentioned tagline. Um, and of course, our, our overall, um, you know, the number of people that provided feedback, I would say it was, you probably said for the final stage of a strategic plan, I just think it would be, you know, low is somewhat to be expected, um, because, uh, people do have, um, competing, uh, competing, um, do, uh, other activities at this time of the year and the strategic plan, um, you know, we tend to see strong feedback in situations where people, um, have a strong opinion about, um, you know, the content of a plan or direction or things provided. So I think people specifically mentioning the tagline does highlight that, you know, this is uh, representative that not, uh, you know, it is representative, uh, if we extrapolate what that would mean in the general population is that, you know, this is something that has been highlighted um, by our communities, uh, and by the individuals that took time, uh, to provide the final feedback.
Okay. So we're happy to do our best to get, uh, feedback from the the partner groups. In fact, I think the N D T A actually weighed in a little bit already. So maybe that's one less that we have to do. Twenty-five percent of our work is done. Um, we'll do our very best to, um, to get feedback from the five partner groups that you mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I apologize for, for dropping that on you just now. It just, it was something that, that hit me as I was listening. Yeah. Again, I've been, I've been a little off today. Thank you. All right. I will hand the floor over to anyone else.
Um, so just in, uh, kind of a follow-up to that question, um, there's a question just asking like, um, basically, are the respondents, have they clarified whether they're parents or caregivers or community members? And I think that is disseminated in the report. If you could just kind of, um, remind us of that, Jillian, that would be great. Thanks.
Yeah, I would say the majority of feedback that we have received, and that would be the online feedback and through, um, emails, our parents and caregivers, uh, and then also probably, um, twenty percent of the attendees at the in-person, uh, were a parent or caregiver as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, just going back to follow the train here on Naomi.
Yeah, uh, Jillian, um, Laura, staff, thank you very much for all the work you've done to, um, put this together and to get it out to the public to be able to provide feedback. I was looking on the, uh, some of the comments, um, I think it was page ninety-four, um, and, uh, it's interesting how there was a lot of discussion around, um, classroom management and behaviors in classrooms. Um, comments about how there's no accountability for students. Um, some of these are coming from parents, actually, whose kids are coming home and describing classroom environments. Um, and there was also mention about the C I S S, um, principles and making them a part of like teaching practice. And so I'm just wondering, um, how many teachers have actually been taught um, the way of being, the, the, the experience of living the C I S S, um, um, principles? Because I think like those comments, I think are also coming from parents as well. And I think it's actually really, uh, beautiful and, um, that way of being in your teaching practice. But how many of our working staff on the ground have been given that opportunity to actually be able to embrace that way of being?
So from the learning services perspective, um, uh, as you know, we've kind of started along this journey very, very recently, particularly around Jedi. Uh, and it has been primarily with principals and vice principals. Uh, and there has been no sort of larger communications plan around the C I S S framework. So my overarching assessment, as I was mentioning a little earlier on, really has been in reading a lot of this, is it's not well understood out there. But of course, it wouldn't be because we've not had any yet large scale, um, implementation or introduction of this yet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thanks, Laura. That's, uh, kind of what I was thinking as well. I think I, I think you and I talked once about the logistics of it. Um, how, how do, how does one do that? Um, no, I, um, I, I thought the feedback was interesting and, uh, um, but also very beautiful. Like there was also the comments about land acknowledgement and recognition and all those pieces. And I think that the framework actually, a lot of those things, the framework is actually going to, uh, or sorry, the strategic plan is going to embrace. So, um, yeah, no, thank you very much. Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you, Naomi. Um, Leanna?
Hi. Um, I agree, Naomi. The comments were very beautiful. Like, I really, sorry, I really enjoyed, um, reading some of them. They're very like, people put a lot of effort and time into some of the comments and it was, um, yeah, it was appreciated to be able to go through those in detail. Um, I hope that we don't take too, too long on the tagline, um, you know, or that that delays anything, uh, because it is our tagline and we just kind of need to get things moving. So, uh, I think the most important word like as Joanna, um, Joanna has added in hers is to keep the word belong. I think belonging and sense of belonging is the number one. So however we frame that, as long as that word's in there, that would be great. But, um, feedback's important, but dang, there's a lot of waiting sometimes.
Thanks, Leanna. Uh, Chantel?
Well, now, Leanna just took, uh, exactly what I was going to say. Um, I, I don't want it to delay us. Um, I, I think, um, we need to move forward. Um, I appreciate the learning through belonging, though. I really appreciate the word belonging as well to me that speaks to community, that speaks to connections. Um, and we need that as our foundation for our students to be, uh, ready to learn. And so I really appreciated that. Um, I think if we're, if we were to, um, if, as, as we talked about going to, uh, the stakeholder groups, um, you know, my only consideration is that we would, uh, really, uh, talk to our rights holders groups as well, um, because they are critical, um, in this process. So, um, it's, it's a thought put out there, but, um, I appreciate it. And the feedback, um, especially the C S S, uh, framework feedback, uh, the reconciliation feedback, um, was really, really good questions, really thought provoking, and I super appreciated it. Um, it's really, uh, got me, got me thinking about some things. So I really appreciate it. And I appreciate everyone taking all of these, uh, comments, uh, very seriously and, um, hopefully we can, we could do some good work with all of this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Mark, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Leanne. I, I had the pleasure of going through the feedback and, um, it's, uh, it's a very good, robust, um, uh, feedback from the community, from, from caregivers, from parents, from, I'm guessing, all walks of life. So, uh, but one underarching theme that I've noticed is that people are happy but not happy enough. Um, the tagline came up time and time again, and, um, it is, and it kind of reinforces what I'm hearing in the community, that the tagline is, uh, is something to reconsider. So having said that, I don't want to hold up, like my colleagues have said, the strategic plan. So I, I think I might like to make a motion and move that the business committee recommends that we set aside the tagline issue till after the strategic plan is passed.
Okay. So I see Greg has seconded it. So would you like to motivate that motion, Mark?
Sure. Yeah. I'm hearing from a number of people in the community over the last few years, even as, uh, Tanya mentioned, right, from the onset, when our tagline was introduced, that it's, it's not a hundred percent online in their, in their mind. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a bit stale and we're in a new strategic plan. So yeah, definitely we can look at changing it and I'd be supportive of that. But I don't want it to hold up our, uh, strategic plan and put a monkey wrench in everything. So for that reason, I made the motion and, uh, hopefully that, uh, we can deal with it once we get this good work done that staff has put together and Jillian as well, because coming in late of the game, um, you know, it's, it's not easy to sort of learn how to swim once you're in the water. So good job, Jillian. And, uh, here we go. I'm, that's all I got to say on that. Thanks, Leanne. Yes, yes, I can, Karen. I'll, I'll tape that in.
Uh, thanks, Mark. Um, I'll just take this opportunity while you're typing that in to just, um, comment, um, while I understand, um, the need to have some more input about the tagline, I also feel that this is, is the time, um, to just do it now. Um, we've had discussions about changing the tagline and then leaving it out and changing it and not having one. Um, and I think we have a couple of weeks. I think we have enough time to have a couple of conversations. Um, and, you know, we can talk about this again before we finalize, finalize it on the 26th. Um, I think coming back to it just
Should do it.
Circles, circles us back around and it opens it back up again. And I feel like introducing the plan with it complete is, um, in my opinion, the way to go. And I really, I, I come back to what Laura said, because it really spoke to me about the comments regarding truth and reconciliation and you know, the fact that it's do more, dig deeper. I think that's like some really great, um, hurting words on that. Um, it's a call for all of us to do more and to dig deeper. And, um, I just kind of like, let that sit as my final comment. Sorry, I muted myself there. Does anyone have any? Okay, Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Leanne. Uh, whoa, there we go. Thanks, Leanne, through you to staff. I just, um, was hoping that you could uh, remind us as a committee, kind of what your plans would be based on what you heard right now with respect to the tagline. Sorry, I should have been more clear.
Um, with regards to the tagline, I'm going to err on the side of doing all of the things that you've all mentioned. So again, I think if we could maybe summarize what we've heard, and then if we could have, you know, through the chair, um, more, you know, really explicit direction, that would be good. I'm hearing that we need to consult, um, again, with, um, our partner groups that we, that, that, that has maybe not, has a strict timeline on it in that we don't necessarily need to have that feedback or input by the 26th of June, and we hopefully approve the board, um, strategic plan. So get more feedback, take a little bit of time.
Okay. No, thank you. And the reason I asked is, I think the committee is asking a lot of staff to do in a really short period of time. Um, so I'm kind of leaning towards like, yes, we can do this, but perhaps we should take our time and do it right. And if it turns out that should amend the tagline, that we do it after the plan is adopted. I'm, I'm with the rest of the trustees who have shared their thoughts, um, around not wanting to delay the adoption of the plan. I don't think that was the intent with bringing forward the amendment, um, you know, as it was presented by staff. And I think that And I think that was an awesome suggestion. What I'm hearing from the board or the committee, in my perspective, is that we're not necessarily wanting to just move forward as it was proposed. What I heard was the committee asking staff to go out and speak to all our rights holders and partners and stakeholders to get feedback. And that's fine, but I would be reluctant to ask staff to do that in the next two weeks. Like, I think, I think that's a bigger task that might need a bit more time. And then to put something together and come back to the board. So I think I will speak in favor of the motion because, you know, it's not that I don't support the tagline that was put forward by staff, but I think what I'm hearing from the committee is unrealistic in the timeframes that we're talking about here to come back. So I think maybe we could slow it down a little bit, have the discussions with the right people. And then should we need to make any changes, there'll be time for that later.
Thanks, Greg. Laura, did you want to comment or?
I may. I'll just, for those of you who maybe weren't at some of the in-person sessions, anyway, the Jillian and her team really laid out all of the, like, all of the aspects of the current plan. So they, they cut out, almost like they cut out pieces of the plan, blew them up, put them on Bing posters, which is why we were able to go through the first part of the feedback that I went through with mission and vision, guiding principles, tagline, goals. So throughout the consultation process, whether it be with our indigenous partners, whether it was the public consultation session at Wellington, wherever that was, there was opportunity to comment on all of those aspects of the plan.
Okay, thanks, Laura. I'm just going to read Deepak's comment out just as I know that her computer thing doesn't allow her to speak. It just says if there's only a few respondents, maybe just move on, accept it and move on. I'm assuming she means that... Actually, I'm not going to assume anything. I'll just leave that comment as it is because I might get it wrong. So I don't see any other comments. So I'm going to call the question regarding that the business committee set aside any decision on changing the tagline until after the strategic plan is passed by the Board of Education. So if anyone is opposed to doing that, could you just type it in the chat for me, please? Okay, so the motion carries. Karen, can you just record the opposed? Thank you. All right, so moving on, there's no information under number 12. Karen, are there any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. All right, so I will look for a motion to adjourn. Chantel? And seconded by Leanna? Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. If I could have any request of you, it would be that you go outside and take your shoes off and ground yourself in nature and enjoy the rest of the sunshine. Have a good night.